Good evening, I would like to call the meeting to order and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, I'll have the clerk please call the roll.
Supervisor Fulton here.
Treasurer Horning?
Here.
Mr. Chofu?
Here.
Trustee Colain?
Here.
Trustee Germain?
Here.
Trustee Harper?
Here.
Trustee Petrucci?
Here.
Thank you. Item number four is approval of our meeting agenda.
So moved.
Support.
Support.
Motion by Treasurer Horning, second by Trustee Harper. Any discussion? Being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item number five is Call to the Public. Anybody this evening at Call to the Public? Good evening.
Good evening, how are you? My name is Brandon Camerello, I'm the President of the Millpoint Association.
John Mew, I'm the Vice President of the Association.
And, we have a couple of concerns. We were told that we were unable to put a gate up between Millpoint and Cobblestone. Recently there's been a big issue with it due to the Healy Homes building homes back there. And we have, I mean, huge semi trucks just plowing through our neighborhood, trying to go to their neighborhood. And, from what I was told, they have room for about eight more homes that they're gonna put in there. And it's gonna create...
It's tearing up, it's tearing up our roads.
And we're about to invest a million and a half in our roads and we don't wanna have to do that for, you know, and have semi trucks be plowing through everything. I was told it was due, the fire marshal was due to a fire, because there's not two points of access to get in and out. My, my thought was if we put a breakaway gate that allows security vehicles to come through in and out, then it wouldn't be a problem, however, they have denied that. I was just wondering if we can look into this further, as well as we get about 200 to 300 cars down that road a day cutting through between our road and...
At least.
And what was the other road that, the main road over there?
Ergen.
Ergen.
Ergen. Yes.
They come flying by too, because it's a straightaway.
We have video and everything of it.
Okay, we, we don't act at Call to the Public, but there's several of us that were on the Planning Commission at the time that we did that plan development. And there was reasons that we did not put a gate in there. So, we can do some work on it with our staff and we will get somebody to contact you so if there's anything that we can do via, maybe even less than that, mandate that the traffic come up Ergen Road through their own sub. Can't guarantee anything like that.
Yeah, I just have a quick question. Isn't there, do you have a sign up currently, no construction track?
Yes, and they still come down there. We got pictures and a huge tandem semi is coming down there.
I think, I know that you guys also have an agreement with the Sheriff's Department, correct? Because the Sheriff's Department monitors the, the private roads in Millpoint. I think we need, we can assist somehow by getting maybe, talk to Mr. Murphy. They have an agreement with, with, you get your police officer or the sheriff out there, start handing out tickets to the construction folks, they won't come down there anymore. And, and, and get them taken care of. The second thing is you don't really wanna, I, I know that it makes sense to have a, a, it makes, it makes sense to you to have a gate there. I used to live in Millpoint.
Okay.
I was also President of the Association.
Oh, alright, so you feel, he feels this.
So, the thing about it is, is that will detract overall, I think, to the value. You, you are connecting to the, the other sub. It is a, that is a critical benefit for both those subdivisions to have that through and through. And in fact, our Township Planning Commission is making those kinds of decisions currently to have more of those internal systems to get people off of 59, having to avoid 59, in fact.
Especially with hacker being...
Because of the, especially where you're at, being right on 59. That doesn't mean people should be using that as a through and through. What I'm saying is, is that for the benefits of both you and the Cobblestone group, you wanna have that fence available there. Or, or you don't wanna have a fence there. But, it's the through and through people that are ruining your roads.
Not even...
And, and, and I totally get it. I totally get it. It's a private, those are private roads in there, they shouldn't be torn up. We need to figure out how we can do a little bit better here in enforcement. So, that's just my two cents. And I know we don't talk, I'm sorry, but it...
Well, I wasn't gonna interrupt you, but you, you covered a lot of ground.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. We appreciate that.
But, but, there, there are some, remember, this is a long time ago, but we had lengthy discussions about that, putting a barrier there. And it was decided through, I think it was mutual on both parties, that it was not gonna be a barrier. But, Trustee Colaini makes some good points that I think there's some other opportunities there. So, if we can get, if you could give, Bob West is sitting right here. If you can get your name contact information to him, then he can get that to whoever would need to be tomorrow, or give it to James, whatever's appropriate.
Yeah, we just wanted the safety for the kids if cars not even stopping at the stop sign. And we have video footage of cars just blowing through these stop signs and we only can afford the police officers and there's so many days a week.
Yeah, they can only go, we, we do it, you know, and some of the hours are different. They come in and try to get the speeders and stuff, so. But, alright.
Thank you.
Definitely appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Anybody else this evening at Call to the Public? Being none, we'll move to item number six, which is approval of our consent agenda.
Move.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Petrucci, second by Trustee Germain. Is there any discussion? Being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item number seven, we have a presentation this evening from the Economic Development Council of Livingston County, Anna R. Spark. Good evening.
Evening. Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm gonna turn it over to you Phil and James, did you wanna have an introduction? I know you're part of this as well.
I've had the pleasure of serving on the Executive Board since beginning of 2015 and I'm just working with Phil and Anna. They can fill you in on some good things happening throughout the county and the region. And I'll let them take it from there.
Thanks, good evening. My name is Phil Santor, Vice President of Business Development and Anna R. Spark. It's my colleague Anna Zinko, who's our Lead Business Development Manager here in Livingston County. I wanna thank the board for your time this, this evening. And also wanna reiterate thanks to, to James for his leadership on the board. Like James said, he's been on the Executive Committee for a time for, has it been that long, since 2015? It's a, I would say it's a lot of work, at least I hope not, but it's certainly something that takes up time and we appreciate James' leadership on that and appreciate how sharp he is as a Township Manager. So, congrats to all of you on that point. Wanted to spend a couple of minutes here, just going quickly through and I'll try and hit some high points. And then, I did provide packets to each of your seats. I think what's included in there is a copy of this presentation, a copy of sort of a one pager in terms of some of our work overall that we've been doing in the region, as well as a Heartland Township profile in terms of some of the data that I wanna highlight that's relative to, or important to Heartland Township. So you can follow along if you'd like. Just wanna give a little bit of overview in terms of the baseline. I, I think, you know, as, as the board, you're probably engaged with some of this information already, but I didn't think it hurts to kinda go over and kinda orient overall where the Township's at. Slightly higher than national average in terms of Heartland Township residents from a high school, I'm sorry, from a bachelor degree and grad degree perspective. It's about 29% or so nationwide in terms of the average, and in Heartland Township we're a little bit higher than that. This is a split overall of what the labor force looks like in Heartland Township and sort of where the jobs are, relatively speaking on that. So you can see that they're pretty evenly split between sales and office and admin. And then it kinda goes on down the line through, through some other folks. Overall, mix of business and jobs, you can see here kind of the four main points here. Retail, education, construction, healthcare and social services. Towards the end here, I'll talk a little bit about sort of future trends. And I think I'll highlight the last part in terms of healthcare and social services as something that might wanna be on the Township's radar relative to sort of growth overall in Livingston County since we've seen a lot of movement in that way. And are there opportunities to sort of double down in that perspective? Here, I think is a pretty significant point of pride. It should be for the, for the Township, at least in my opinion. You're in the wealthiest county in the state, if you do it based on median income. And you are 11% higher in terms of median household income than the county, and 67% higher than the state. So, probably no surprise to you, but it's, it's a place where there's obviously a lot of families, a lot of two-income homes. And that's borne out in the data. Moving to a little bit more of a regional perspective, this is something that we track and we provide in our quarterly reports that, that we provide to members of our board and hopefully to you as well. And this is obviously jobless rate compared, or in Livingston County compared to a state and nationwide average. Declining overall over the past few years. I don't know if you guys view this as a, a good or bad thing. It's a little bit of both in our world. We consider this a good thing because obviously if people are able to access the labor market, that's a helpful component. Also can be a challenge on the side of businesses that are considering a location decision. They wanna know they're gonna have an available talent pool. If they feel like it's a little bit tight in the labor market, they might have some questions on that. So it's, it's sort of a double edged sword in that way. We track residential sales in Livingston County. I think we're one of the only economic development groups in the state of Michigan that tracks this and provides this information to our board. That's because it's this pretty critical element for Livingston County overall. I think this has dipped down a little bit in the past couple of months from the data, but overall continues to be pretty strong. 2015 and 2014 were both pretty strong years from a housing perspective. And we get this data from our partners at the Livingston Association of Realtors. So I wanna spend a couple of minutes here talking about the overall workforce and sort of where, not only where Livingston County residents are working, but also where people that are working in Livingston County live. And those are two separate questions, of course. This is the data that we get from our partners, the Workforce Intelligence Network. They tell us about the inflow and outflow of labor force on a yearly basis. As you might not be surprised, Livingston County is a bedroom community and you have a lot of folks that are living here and working elsewhere during the day. And then you also have people that are coming in from outside of the area to work in Livingston County. So that's one way to represent that data. We also wanted to get a little bit more sort of the business level. So we asked a few of the larger manufacturers in Livingston County to give us their zip code analysis of where their folks are coming from, so you can kinda plot out and see how far they're pulling in from when they're looking at where to access the labor pool. So we looked at three large manufacturers and you can kinda see the heat map of where they're pulling in from. Obviously they're pulling in from around the area of Livingston County. And you can see they're sort of dotted all over the, all over the place. A little bit of concentration in Lansing, Flint, et cetera.
Yeah, we have six zip codes, so there's probably six dots.
Probably, probably six dots, yeah. I think the other, the other piece is to kinda go a little bit more granular into Livingston County on that. But, just an interesting representation and something that we've shown this when there are folks coming through that are looking at the region in general. And we'd like to talk about how far people are actually willing to commute in this market. This is unusual from other places around the country. We also have access to some information about sort of the top job postings. And so we pulled some information here that's specific to Heartland Township. You can see both the employers and also the occupations that are pulling from in the county. Hopefully you can kinda see that in your, your materials. Wanted to give a little bit of sense of where, where the jobs are in Heartland Township in particular. And then also wanted to provide a little overview in terms of sort of what our role is and some of the services that we provide. This is highlighted in that one pager that's included in your materials. But, overall speaking, we're proactively outreach into the business community and getting involved almost on a consulting basis. Not everything that we do is related to specific new developments, but we're trying to assist with companies so that they are ultimately stronger in the work that they're doing. I think in a couple of examples of that, locally here, we've had a relationship over time with Copert, which is a Dutch-based manufacturer of bees that you might be familiar with. And wanted to connect them with, with the state government leadership. And so now they've had this ongoing relationship, not only with Lieutenant Governor, but also the Director of the Department of Agriculture, who's been out there and visited their facilities, when she's been over in Europe. And that's been helpful for them to get further ingrained in, in Michigan. And also Five Sparrows and other companies in Heartland Township. And it's interesting, we were having a conversation today about some of the work that we get involved in when we're having these conversations. It can be as, as, things as off the wall as, you know, talking why you shouldn't be doing business in Iran because it's illegal. And that comes up in, in, in our backyard as people see that as a business opportunity and have to advise them not to do that. So it's kind of those types of things that come up that are unusual, that we don't expect, but are part of the wheelhouse of what we're engaged in. We also work on sort of what we call here, community-based project management. When we do have an opportunity for growth, we bring it into our portfolio of companies that we're actively working with and will get involved in so that we hopefully, they make a decision for, for our region as opposed to going somewhere else. We've had a few examples of that recently in, in Heartland. And I think the value that we're trying to provide there is access to networks, access to technical knowledge of things that could be opportunities for those companies and try and be very proactive and deliberate about working them through the process. Doesn't work out in every case, sometimes they're gonna make location decisions elsewhere. But that's where we wanna get involved in, in those decision-making processes. And then also wanna provide our municipal partners with information on things that are going on at the state level. I'm gonna talk here in a little bit about some things that are changing at the community development level at the state that I think could be relevant for the Township. Overall, this are some results, you see that in the one pager. Want to track obviously new job commitments, new investments in the, in the region. Also new, we wanna identify how many people that are working at the companies that we're engaged in. So you can kinda get a sense of the scale of who we're trying to, who we're trying to work with and, and the companies that are in the area. And then also a little bit, we're the contractor to the EDC LC. And if you take a look at the average that other communities are, are putting in place and sort of what the EDC provides, we think that we're hopefully giving a pretty good bang for your buck, so to speak. Few highlights, and I'll just go through this briefly in terms of some company growth opportunities and a couple of things that are more strategic. James was at our board meeting today that we had this afternoon, we held it at Pinkney Schools. They are investing in a cybersecurity range that is available to them through a grant through the MEDC. And they've decided that's a strategic growth opportunity for their community. I think overall, in Livingston County, it's something that should be pretty exciting to us all. It's the only cybersecurity range in, that's at the high school level. And it's the only one that's this far over the state. They might be doing something in Grand Rapids, but the other institutions are the Merritt Network in Ann Arbor and, and Wayne State University. So, it's unique that in our backyard, we have a high school that's willing to invest in this kind of opportunity. So we think it could be interesting going forward from a talent generation perspective. The other one to highlight is the MTA. I think I've got another slide on that. So we've been able to work through a program at the state level called Community Ventures, which tries to provide structurally unemployed individuals in certain markets with access to opportunities and jobs. We've actually found a number of the manufacturers in the Howell area have taken advantage of this. And they're using some funding at the state to help bus those folks from Flint down to their manufacturing opportunities. It's a program that is available to structurally unemployed folks in Detroit, excuse me, Detroit, Flint, Pontiac and Ann Arbor, I believe. So something that we see, we saw one company, TriBar in particular, take advantage of that. And it actually built out, you know, after one company finds success, it kinda generates from there. And the whole pipeline for Community Ventures for a few months was Livingston County companies that wanted to take advantage of the opportunity.
Who pays for that?
It's actually a state program. So basically what happens is for each person that the company's willing to bring into the organization, they'll provide $5,000 as basically a subsidy that they can use for transportation or whatever it might be. And then they have a series of what they call wraparound services. Because basically what they found is even if you give someone that's in that situation a job, they also have, you know, other, they're structurally unemployed, right? There's other structural issues that are affecting them. So they'll provide them with counseling on setting up a bank account, because a lot of folks aren't using banks, for example. Helping them with getting access to daycare, because a lot of them have kids and have to provide childcare. So it's those types of things where they get actively involved in these people's lives. And that seems to be the, the trigger of both having a job opportunity that they have responsibilities for, as well as these wraparound services. And it's paid for by the state.
Well, and I'll just say anecdotally that TriBar and a couple of the other companies up there have found such good success with the program that their buses are full and they're looking for more buses. And we've just, we're in conversations with another major employer on the west side to get them enrolled. So it's going really well.
Right. Something that's going through the backyard here, so something to be aware of. Wanted to raise this as something that's, that's, I guess, in the works and mentioned this to James as well, but the Redevelopment Ready Communities Program is something that has been basically a technical assistance program that the state has provided for a while. We've had representatives from this program come out to talk about basically a set of best practices or what they feel are best practices to engage and encourage the proper type of development in a community. And what's newer or different about this is that they've put together a timeline where if a municipality or a community is interested in accessing some community development resources that they have available, they are asking that communities start, at least start in the process of becoming a redevelopment-ready community in order to access those services. This was presented at a local partners meeting that we had with the MEDC just last week. I'll tell you, it did not go over well overall, sort of requiring the communities go through this process in order to access some of these incentives. But I wanted to at least put it on your radar so that if it is something that you would wanna identify if you're doing a development or there's an opportunity to engage with the MEDC, they're, they may ask to see where you're going through on this process. So, I'll mention that. And then just overall, I guess in terms of thinking about what's on our mind relative to, to Heartland Township and sort of the future going forward. High level points, keeping local talent local. So this is a discussion point in terms of the number of college graduates that are especially coming out of places like Heartland. There's a program in place called My Break Futures, which basically tries to serve as a platform between students that are engaged in career-seeking opportunities and local employers. So a lot of times there's just not an awareness of what companies are doing in your own backyard. And there's trying to sort of remove the gap between people thinking, alright, my next step is college, trying to get them to think, what's my actual path to a career, whether it's on the professional side or on the, on the, a blue collar side. Access to capital is another thing that's come up over time. The EDC has partnered with a micro loan program to provide folks that have not been able to access the traditional capital markets through banks or credit unions, to give them a little bit of capital to help them grow something that's older with an organization called SeedOn. We're thinking about land use planning and being deliberate about how do you get things ready for opportunities. I think we know, just anecdotally from things that are going on in the community, that there could be opportunities going forward. Is there a way to be intentional about, or more intentional beyond sort of the master planning process and getting things in place? Because companies are looking to go and move and do things quickly. And what are the things that we can try and do to move that forward? And then overall, doubling down on healthcare, I mentioned this before. U of M, Providence, St. Joe are all making big investments in Livingston County. And is that an opportunity for, for the rest of the community to try and tap into that? Because I think that's gonna be a big area. And then developing talent, there's some training programs that I think Livingston County's been really successful tapping into to help develop these companies' talent as well. Final slide here, I just, a couple of points then in terms of this. We're, we're here to help. We, we basically serve in a lot of different capacities from sort of the sales team for the community, from the project management component that I laid out. And I also include Gopher here, we're happy to go and just get information or find things and follow up on any details. We've got resources to help companies succeed, so we wanna get engaged with folks and, you know, we're proactively doing that. But if you have referrals that you'd love, that you could provide to us, we'd love to hear from those companies as well. I think depending on what our, our tool bag is, I think we've got some, a little bit of something for every company that's out there. And also I just wanna say thank you for, for your leadership and also for your partnership. And we'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you for your presentation.
Sure.
Board members have any questions?
I guess...
So, actually, final slide here, and this is included in this. Any of our contact information is there. We're, it's not just Anna and myself that are on sort of the economic development team that are at your disposal. We have Director of Research, Alex, who, who sits in Ann Arbor, but can provide any data that you need. I'll mention Julia Upfall is a new member of our team. She'll be joining us on November 7th. She's currently doing economic development in the city of Green Bay. And she's a Michigander and we're attracting her back to work here, so we're excited about that opportunity as well.
Was there some discussion about planning? And where did I read something about planning?
I think I meant, I used the phrase land use planning.
Yeah, is, is that, is there something that you guys would offer if we were...
So, that's actually something that we have, we pointed to the Redevelopment Ready Communities Program as something that can help provide some of those best practices. And I think it's, it's, it's an interesting program in a lot of different ways. It's just basically doing a self-assessment to say, here's a list of things that you could be doing from the planning process. Identify where you're already doing those things and sort of checking those boxes. And then if there are things that maybe you haven't thought about before, then that's an opportunity perhaps trying to update some of that. That's one avenue. I think most communities have, are already doing a lot of things that are included in there. The big gap that seems to be out there is there's some indication that if you're gonna go through the planning process, that the decision-making for our planning should stop at the Planning Commission and that the board shouldn't necessarily have a say in that process. That seems to be a little bit of a, a trigger for other communities that have tried to go through that process. But overall, we think it's a, a good set of ideas to at least benchmark where our community may be at overall.
Joe, do you, do you recall when the Planning Commission was gonna go through their comprehensive plan again?
No, I don't. I can't. I know that...
You get pushed out a good five years.
Pushed out another five years. Okay.
I know we look at it annually.
The map, can you...
I revisit it. We've looked at the Redevelopment Ready, I've been to a few sessions on that. And I think for the most, it is, it's a kind of a self-test, how are we doing? And my take on it is we are doing most of the things within their best practices. Probably some good examples. I have some criticisms of it because it's very biased towards cities, but...
Even in the name, right?
Yeah, by its name, it suggests that, you know, redevelopment over greenfield development is the bias there. But, there's some good stuff there and I've talked it over with Troy and Dave in the past.
I just wanted to see if we're using that resource and it sounds like we are.
I had a couple of questions. Does your organization provide business acceleration for new technology? What, what are you, what are you doing in that realm?
Yeah, we do have a, a business acceleration or entrepreneurial services as the other side of the organization. That's actually something that we focus on. In particular, we have a, a program that we deal with in the city of Ann Arbor, so a lot of the activities through there. We have an incubator in the city of Ann Arbor and also in downtown Insalani. And that's through a Smart Zone program that basically provides not direct capital into those companies, but provides them with access to, you know, the common example I use is if you have, if you're a technology company, you have some, something that you wanna get patented, if you don't know where to go or you don't have the resources to get that patented, it'll provide access to resources to take, have an attorney go through that process, for example.
Is your focus mainly on biomedical or, or those types? Is it more technological? Or is it, does it look into some of the things that, you know, like water technology and those kinds of items?
Yeah, it's, it's broad in that way. It's not, I'd say the, what it's not good at, I suppose, is sort of retail opportunities or folks that are utilizing the market that's in their backyard. So a lot of times consultants, for example, will, will come through. And if you're a consultant, you only have so many hours in the day that you can devote towards that. The program's really focused on technologies that can scale, to use that phrase. So, life science is included in there. I think what we've seen in our program that has been most common is on the technology space overall. So, you know, creating a software product, but certainly life science has been an active part of that. Those would probably be the two largest, I guess, buckets that has been focused on.
But you focus more along the lines of the universities, so is it connected more with like U of M and, and EMU?
Yeah, exactly. So that, it actually started through the, or one of the main drivers for it, originally it was through the tech transfer office at the University of Michigan. And the idea is that they wanted to have a, either they have their own services internally, but there's also a community of people or entrepreneurs that are also working outside of the university. And this is a way to get them sort of through that process and help, you know, create new businesses.
So what's your role in that?
So our role is we, we basically function in organizing that program. So we provide the space, provide the fiduciary for identifying who's a good resource for this, who should get connected, and then kinda take them through the process and, you know, report out on, on what happens, et cetera. So we basically manage that program.
It's a good question because it's a good reminder of sort of Economic Development 101 is what the focus is of EDC's relationship with Spark is. Economic development is focusing on those industries that have a good a service that they are selling to other markets, regionally, nationally, internationally, that is obviously bringing in wealth and creating economic development within this community versus your retail service, other industries that are just kinda taking money out of your left pocket, put it in your right pocket. So that's, that's the focus EDC was on when they retained Spark. So that's the focus EDC was on when they retained Spark. The entrepreneurial piece, I give them credit for some of the work they do even in Livingston County, even though that wasn't necessarily the focus. That's a whole nother methodology in the economic development that Livingston County said, we're not quite doing that yet, but it may be in the future. In fact, there's a retreat that the EDC is doing with all the member townships, villages, cities, counties, and private donors to talk about that vision of maybe, and they could very well get into more entrepreneurial type services.
Yeah, and I'll just add to that point. So our focus has been on mature companies in Livingston County, and we do rely a lot on our partners. I think there's terrific organizations in Livingston County. Obviously, the Heartland Chamber has been a really strong partner for us, and Clear University has actually been a major part of the entrepreneurial side of the work. They have a micro-business incubator, they have a vice presence dedicated solely towards entrepreneurship. She also serves on our board. And so it's been important for us to obviously know who our partners are in the community, and they've been strong supporters.
Well, now, just to add to that, I'll say anecdotally to your point, James, I just met, so in the last two weeks, I've met with a company that we did connect with the Michigan Angel Fund, because though they weren't in our smart zone, the technology was appropriate to pursue funding in that way. Connected two companies with the Procurement and Technical Assistance Center at U of M, which helps companies out here. As you guys know, there's a lot of companies that are very auto-focused, and sometimes helping them to diversify into government contracting or aerospace can be really beneficial to their business. We've helped a company with a marketing project, and then with some of the more traditional things like the Skilled Trades Training Fund through Michigan Works, the busing. So we really run the gamut of resources that are available, so I'll just reiterate Phil's ask on if you have a company that even might be kicking around an idea, refer them to us, and we can meet with them. It's completely free of cost to them, and we might be able to connect them with a resource. And the worst thing that happens is they have a great conversation with me, so, you know.
I have a question for Anna.
Sure.
You said you specifically worked with Livingston County.
Yes.
Other than the major categories that were in the slide presentation, are there other areas that you think are predominant in our county for future growth, job growth?
That's a great question. I think we're seeing a ton of growth in the healthcare space. There's several very large outpatient hospitals, U of M, St. Joe's, St. John's Providence, that are coming online as early as next year, and some of them will be completed in 2018. And so that's a space that we're seeing a lot of growth in. And to James's point, when we do go to the EDC LC retreat, that's an area of discussion will be sort of what are we going to do in the healthcare space? Because, also to James's point, traditionally, healthcare isn't a driving industry. It kind of comes in as you see a cluster of driving industry companies, manufacturing, things like that, then the hospitals come in, and they're also a nonprofit organization. However, there's going to be a huge wave of hiring in that space, so I think that's the sector we're seeing. And more anecdotally than anything, I've met with a number of medical device companies. So there's a very, there's a lot of these serial entrepreneurs out in Livingston that might literally start their business in their garage and then move into a space, and there's just some really brilliant people out here. There's a lot of people who used to work for the university or work for a lot of the bigger OEMs, and so there are these tech companies that are growing and continue to amaze me with the technologies that I'm encountering. So I hope that answers your question. And of course, there's a strong retail sector out here.
And do you, neither of you think that Heartland Township should be doing more to attract those types of businesses to our township?
Well, I don't think we're in the position of ever saying that we'd ask you guys to turn something away, right? Because we're sort of a little bit in the pro-growth side, but I think the matter is, you know, there's opportunities that are out there, right? I think that there's going to be growth, there's going to be opportunities that could come up that will provide chances to be deliberate, I guess, about that growth. And so I think where we're at in terms of, you know, we've been in the community now for a few years, I think we've got an understanding of the lay of the land, and what we're hoping to do, and James mentioned the retreat, is to try and say, okay, how and should we be deliberate about these efforts? You know, obviously Livingston County's been a bedroom community for a long time. Is that something that we sort of speak double down on, or is there an opportunity to try and diversify that? I think our approach would be, maybe a little bit of diversification would be a good thing, but in terms of how you do that in the appropriate way and things that are appropriate for the township and for the county is kind of a question that we have to address.
And then my last question is, and perhaps you don't know the answer to this, and maybe it would be hard to come by, but do you know the specifics for Heartland Township in terms of the number of residents that work in our township or work elsewhere, and if they would be in Livingston County or in one of the adjacent counties?
So I know even going through, getting down granular data from even the township perspective, and you'll notice in your packets with the community profile, for example, that the population number is actually slightly lower than your 2010 census amount, and that's due to the data source that we've got. I don't know if we could go down to the granular level in terms of Heartland Township residents and sort of where they're going. That's a great question for our partner. I mentioned Workforce Intelligence Network. That's probably a takeaway that we can try and get back to you on, because I don't know in the back of my...
In the 2010 census data, there is that, that I do believe at the township level to know where our residents are going to and coming from. And to your earlier question as well, as we've talked about, our support and why we're in the EDC is on regional economic development, even not even just in the county, just the fact we're partnering with Ann Arbor Spark in Washtau County, is a commitment to regional economic development that while we don't have all of the infrastructure assets that might attract as much of these industries, you know, without rail or 96 being in our backyard or things like that, we certainly can support those things happening with the rising tide raises all ships mentality, and as we always say, those smart people that work there have to live somewhere, and they can live in Heartland. So that's the idea of economic development.
I just raised my questions, not that we can do a lot about it, but, you know, on the horizon in our township, we have quite a bit of new residential construction occurring, and it would be nice if some of those people could stay in the township and work. I think we're a little lacking in job growth in that regard.
And I think that everyone, you know, when you see that number, 70%, even from a county-wide basis, going elsewhere, I think that's certainly something that kind of tees your mind, is is that an opportunity to try and retain some of those folks? I guess the devil's advocate on that point would be that are some people self-selecting a way they want to live in a specific place where, you know, you don't want to run into the people that you work with when you're going out grocery shopping or something like that. So it's a decision point that they're making, but I agree, it's absolutely an opportunity.
I routinely run into my colleagues at Kroger in Ann Arbor, so...
Everyone likes to do that. Well, I guess without any questions, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate the update. Move on to item number eight, which is pending the new business. We have the Dunham Road pathway engineering data collection. Mr. West?
Good evening. Per the request of the directive of the board, I should say, at the last meeting we discussed, possibly looking to the installation of a Dunham Road pathway, I had suggested that we look into gathering the topography before the winter season sets upon us. That way, we're not limited as to what work we could perform over the course of winter if the choice is to go forward with that project. The proposal is all-inclusive, just to give you an idea of what the whole project design would cost. What I'm looking for at this point in time would be if the desire of the board is to, at some point, complete this section of pathway, to move forward with the topography and there is a geotechnical allowance into this particular proposal, because that will gather data to let us know if any sort of bridge or what sort of soil conditions occur through the wetlands in there. So what you had before is a recommendation to approve the topography collection for Dunham Road as well as with the geotechnical allowance, which is just a small portion of the complete design proposal that you have in front of you. Be happy to answer any questions that you have, or may have regarding that?
And I would add to it, I'd also included, this topic got brought up at the last meeting, so I had the CIP cash flow updated to show this complete project possibly being done next year with the estimates that, very, very preliminary conceptual estimates that HRC had put to it. If we are considering the Dunham Road, obviously that does put us in a position where the Capital Projects Fund would not have enough next year, and so the board would have to decide whether it wanted to use its fund balance policy in the general fund to take about 20% out of the general fund in order to cash flow this, or to bond for this project in order to do it. So I just wanted to make the board fully informed of that as they're deciding whether they might consider this. Now, again, if you are, if we want to get the topo and the geo-tech done, that will be forever useful in someday doing that project. And while we're out there getting topo on Heartland Road, we can do this. That's what's before you now. I just want to make sure you're aware of the implication of possibly if you wanted to entertain doing the project actually next year or not, so...
So I've got about three questions. To do the topo survey and geotechnical allowance would be $19,000, and that would be good forever, because you know the topo and what kind of soils are there?
Yes, as long as there's no major development that may alter that, but if a development came in, we would require the topo be redone. So yes, to answer your question, that is good forever.
Okay. And then the second question I have, from the edge of, where the, on Dunham Road, where you come out of the park to the school, that sidewalk would cost $240,000 estimated.
That is correct.
And then the other one would be 800 and something, that'd be from the school entrance all the way down to Heartland Road, would be $800,000.
That is correct. These are preliminary numbers. That is based on the addition of a boardwalk. Boardwalk, the most basic boardwalk is about $100 a linear foot, and that's not decorative, that's not a desirable bridge, that is a functional bridge.
So that whole, if we were to put a sidewalk, the whole thing together would be over, I mean, with these numbers, it's over a million dollars?
Preliminary estimates pegged at that number.
And you can pave a whole road for a million dollars a mile? I know there's a lot of wetland through there, but it just seems like an awful lot of money for that sidewalk, but I understand there's other things that go with it. There's the, the boardwalk's a half a million dollars of it, so...
And the geotechnical may tell us we don't need as much boardwalk as you need. I'm not guaranteeing that, but that's where you would look at if that's what you wanted to do.
But you're not asking for a request to do this tonight? You're asking for, the request from the board was to look at the topo and the...
With the geotechnical allowance, if this is a project the board wants to do.
If you have reason to think that even a best-case scenario for doing that sidewalk all the way to Heartland, including some sort of a boardwalk, even the most minimal of length, if you think that that project prices out of reality, then yeah, I would tell you not to get all that work done.
When's it my turn?
I'm sorry, I was trying to hog the day. Go ahead.
I would like to know which side of Dunham Road they are collecting survey data on. Is it both sides, and is it only within the right-of-way?
Yes, it is both sides. Within the right-of-way, to determine what would be the most beneficial side to construct it on. That's what this proposal's for.
There's challenges on both sides. The topo would tell us which would be the least challenging.
Two weeks ago when we met, I suggested that in lieu of trying to put a sidewalk that costs a million dollars through a swamp, we consider approaching the school district and seeing if we can build it on dry ground. Has that conversation happened? And could they do the survey for the same amount of money or less if we changed the location?
Yes, the preliminary conversations have occurred. Schools are more than willing to permit, I guess a pathway would be the appropriate term. However, I wouldn't look to secure any funding, cost-sharing from them. That seems to be a dead-end road.
In my recollection, I thought we had discussed it here, that the path of that, the length of that path to go through the whole campus would be significantly longer than we're talking here and would drive the cost up significantly, and there seemed to be some support for that the existing roads were sufficient through the campus. I don't recall the board reaching a consensus on that.
Well, I happened to walk it the other day, just to see what it was like.
And I should probably, I don't mean to interrupt, I was confused with your question. I thought you meant the Dunham Road frontage. I did not understand you meant all the way through the campus. So that's a conversation to still be had.
Yeah, on the north side of Dunham Road, the wetland area is not very wide. It's probably no more than 100 feet wide. So you can get a, you could get a sidewalk that parallels Dunham Road, it's not in the swamp, it's on the high ground, and would still intersect with Heartland Road, but not at the intersection. And that distance is not that great, you know, it's not going to be that much greater. You're kind of going off on an angle as opposed to a straight. It is longer, yes, but it would be all dry-ground construction and would not require any of wetland work or bridges that need to be maintained or things like that. So I'm not opposed to getting the survey done, but I thought it would be wise to try to determine the pathway before we spend the money on the survey.
So Matt, can you, James has the map up here. Would you be, could you kind of show us where your thought process was, where...
You suggested taking it back behind here?
No, that's at fire.
No.
You could clear a lot of here. And then you can come up with this. That's wet. Park is wet, it's right there.
I think there's some significant area here along Dunham Road. It may not go back very far, but this is pretty low and wet here, yeah.
But this is another option. I'm not saying it's ideal, but it's certainly less expensive than the other route.
So could, are you looking for them to perhaps delineate where that wetland is in their topo?
Oh, yeah, we could reevaluate with HRC and check, we can check with the schools. They may still have topo and even geotechnical data from that area, because even as recently as the solar panel project, they had looked at that piece. They may have, that could tell us a better story, if the board was interested in pursuing that. That's what I would need to know.
I also think the road commission might have quite a bit of data on this area too, because when Dunham Road was paved, they did a great deal of work to improve the drainage, and now the water isn't near as high as it used to be. It's shrunk that size of that area significantly, because the flood, road used to flood. It doesn't happen anymore.
So that's a good question. Would, if the road commission would have done a lot of work along that, would they have done this same kind of work that we're looking for them to do for a sidewalk?
We can certainly reach out to them.
If the information's already been done, why would, if we could get it from the, I don't know if we can or...
We can check. I just wouldn't want to steer you wrong. I've not known the road commission to do that kind of detail past the edge of the road. We can find out, but the schools may even be a better potential lead. Is that, and before we go that route, I need to make sure I hear from the board that there's consensus around the idea that of pursuing a path that does go off on the school property back behind there, is that the board's interest?
Well, I think it might be a little bit... While I think it might be a little bit inconvenient, I think it's going to be much safer, because there's a lot of high school kids that look at that straightaway and drive quickly, and it still fulfills the goal, in my opinion, of connectivity, and it's going to be a lot less expensive.
Well, I think you can even go any further. Is anybody, is there a consensus that we would be willing to spend a half or $800,000, up to $800,000 on a boardwalk system? I mean, that's what, there was one proposal with that. I would be against that. I wouldn't be, I don't know, I'd like to hear what the other board members feel about that.
I would not spend that. If we were, you know, building a nature park and trying to get people to go to see the turtles, that's a different story. We're just trying to provide safe...
Again, I'm just trying to, I think we'll just take, maybe, look, we're going to get to yours next, your question next. But is there any desire from the board, any, to spend 800 on that? Okay.
Maybe half a mile.
So the other question, then, is there, Matt has another idea out there. Is there a consensus of the board to go forward and get the initial information to see if it's doable? You're looking at me like I just didn't make any sense, and I probably didn't.
Maybe I can jump in here and help this conversation out. I'd make a recommendation. I want to revise that. Let me do some more homework working with the schools or road commission. I don't think we have enough information to make that decision yet, if the schools just say, no, we're not cutting across our property, or if the road commission has road data. The goal of this was to try and obtain some sort of cost savings by doing it at the same time as Hartland Road. Right now, Hartland Road, the topography collection is on hold, awaiting this approval, and if that's not the case, I want to proceed with Hartland Road and focus on that. Let me do some more, well, I would recommend to let me do some more information gathering before we move forward with any of this.
Does that mess up your timeline to still get that, gather that information by the time it's frozen, if we wait for the next meeting?
I wish I could predict the weather. But in the grand scheme of things, I don't think it's going to make or break it. It's just, we're not going to recognize any cost savings by having the same crew do them at the same time, which it wasn't a huge savings. This is a much larger scope now. It's evolving. I want to do some more data gathering.
And to that end, you've approved Hartland Road, and so we were only, is the artificial delay, because if you're going to greenlight this tonight, we get it all done together. With the delay, however good it is, we're going to go ahead with Hartland Road, and I guess the other question would be to go ahead and get topo on this stretch. Well, that was part of the proposal, Bob?
Yeah, that was, that was part of the proposal. I mean, I can certainly work with HRC if you want to approve it a not-to-exceed amount. I don't believe there's going to be any geotechnical allowance required for that section. We're not really entering any sort of wetlands. This one will be a little bit more challenging, because we will...
It's around the stretch, right there.
What happens here is the road commission is, is not in favor of having a crossing at where the park intersects with Dunham Road due to site distances. We are most likely going to have to head west on the south side of Dunham and cross at the schools. That's what their ideal situation would be.
Traffic light there. There's no light there.
Right, right, certainly at a traffic light. And if there isn't a traffic light, they at least want you crossing at an intersection. They don't want you just to randomly cross.
Well, that's a bad sight line there.
Yeah, and that's, that's where we run into an issue, and that's how we had the Orr Creek Middle School without a traffic light. That was approved because it's at an existing intersection. That's part of the, part of the issues with where the pathway intersects Dunham Road. We could certainly reduce the scope, and I can have a revised proposal for you if you'd like, or you can have the option to approve a not-to-exceed amount, and I can certainly work with HRC to not exceed that.
Yeah, I would expect that number to be quite a bit less than what you have in front of you, if it's okay with the board to approve tonight to, for us to go ahead with the topo on the south side from the Settlers Park path down to the high school entrance, if we can get that done at the same time. Is that...
Does anybody have a problem with that?
And I will regulate it to make sure we're getting the same costs that we're getting on Hartland Road, and we can combine those and recognize some sort of cost benefit.
Bob, while we're in the early stages with this as well, you may want outreach to the schools. If we went forward with that, it would be nice if there was a spot on the other side of the road versus the entrance into the school, to at least have a sidewalk from there.
My historic, historical conversations with them have been basically, you, Hartland Township, feel free to install whatever you'd like on the other side. We will grant you approval of that.
Yeah, if we're willing to, and at some point, we'd have to decide, because there are no sidewalks per se until you get halfway down to this point. So we'd have to decide where that ends if it doesn't keep going. And we'll want to talk with the schools, because they may have misgivings about a pathway that goes into a heavily brushed area on campus.
I don't know how many people would even use it, really, how well-known it would become.
So we can, we can, we've got more work we can do if that's something the board would like us to pursue. But if we have the board's approval, go and get the topo done just on that stretch.
I would suggest, and since they're already out there, to at least go a little bit past the entrance on the west side, because you don't know where they're going to want to cross in the future.
Certainly. We would, we would probably go to 200 feet north and south at that, a 200-foot radius of the intersection to find the best possible crossing point.
All right. Is there any other discussion or questions this evening on this? So we'll go forward with the topo in front of the school to the park, and you'll talk with the schools and road commission to see.
Absolutely. We'll do so, definitely some more information gathering. It would just, we could at least get the topo in case we decide to move forward over the winter.
Very good. Any other discussion this evening on that, from the board?
So I'm confused. Are we going to authorize this proposal tonight with a cap or?
I was just authorizing the topo only from the school entrance to the park entrance.
And given the dollar amount, the board, it's, I can approve, the board doesn't even have to actually approve that dollar amount. I can approve it for just that.
And I'll work with HRC to manage that project and make sure the costs don't go out of control.
Comfortable with that? Okay. If there's no other discussion on that, thank you.
Are you leaving the meeting? Were you planning on staying around?
Yes.
No, you don't have to stay around. Were you planning on it? I have a question.
Absolutely. I was planning on stopping. Yes.
Okay. So there's, one board member would like to have a motion to the effect of what we just approved. So as part of the record, so if that's the case, that entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approved the topo for the section that was described in our discussion.
Support.
You have a motion of support? Is there any other discussion? Be in all those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Now, you had a question.
I have a question regarding the sidewalk issue over there.
Yeah, I'll be around. So I'll be around if you want.
We're going to take a brief recess here in a little bit, maybe you can cover it then. That be okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to board reports. We are already in our second meeting in October, which is treasure hornin'.
I have nothing this evening.
Trustee Kalini?
No, I don't. But I will tell you, I am going out of town. I will not be at the meeting on Thursday.
Yeah, and I want to talk about that as, when we get to that discussion as well.
Very good. I just wanted to let the board know, I'm actually going to be in Chicago the next three days for work.
Yep. Thank you. Trustee Jermaine?
Wanted to ask the board if there are any problems or difficulties if the hero was to paint the basketball court on the new asphalt pavement on the south side of the building. We had a hero board meeting last night, and now that the parking lot is there and not, not unsafe to walk across, they've, with this nice weather, they've just been outside every day playing basketball. They're making do with a temporary donated basketball hoop. They're considering, the board's considering installing a permanent one if the township board doesn't have a problem with that. But they like to paint the three-point arc and the, you know, free throw line, stuff like that. So that's a question.
Does there anybody have a...
I don't have a problem with that.
You have a, anybody against it?
I just recommend you do it in a different color than the existing markings.
Yeah, they were going to have the high school do it, because they have the right equipment and stuff.
And I'm going to bring this up, because I'm just thinking about it. One of those bumper blocks is upside down, and there's two pieces of metal sticking up straight out. Just, you're going to take, need more than one guy to go, well, you could probably pick that thing up. I just, I noticed it the other day, and I was going to say something to you, so.
I'd like to do that.
Yes, you'll see it. That's...
And then the next thing I'd like to share is that there's been two reports, three reports, two reports and one work plan that's been recently submitted by Merritt Energy's consultant. The, the work plan that was submitted to the DEQ last Friday is for the installation of six more monitoring wells at the former gas plant. And if you look at the map that James has pulled up there, all of the locations that are shown in blue, and most of them are, there's two dots side by side. Each one represents its own well, but one would be a shallow well, and the other would be a deep well. And there, with this additional investigation work, which is supposed to start this week, the DEQ has already approved it, they are going to be able to much more closely identify the extent of the contamination in both the vertical and horizontal direction closest to the former soil excavation pit where, where it's the worst. So just wanted to share that information. There's another drawing, another map that I would like to bring up, and this was the second report that Merritt submitted to the DEQ. This one was just dated today. And what this map shows is where the plant was in the center, and then it shows two concentric circles. One is the half-mile radius, and the other one is the one-mile radius. And all these locations that are identified are houses with private wells that have been sampled by Merritt for the sulfane, and in some cases, some of the other daughter products. There's now over 80 private wells that have been tested, and every one of them has come back non-detect. So this validates the information that we're figuring out in where the site used to be, which was the map we just looked at previously, that the groundwater contamination is still confined to the former five-acre parcel. And I would suspect certainly by Thanksgiving, we're going to have the definition of that boundary very clearly known, and then the company will be able to proceed with some of the feasibility studies for remediation efforts. So I think both of these are good news on this point. I just wanted to share that.
Okay. Thank you. And this will be available on our website as soon as this...
It will be, but I don't know how soon. Will it be up, when will these be uploaded, James?
Just as soon as we make the next update, certainly within a week.
Okay.
Thank you. Trustee Harper?
No report.
Trustee Puccucci?
No report.
Turk Shofu?
The date to register for, to vote for the November 8th election has passed. We are still doing absentee voter applications, and we will be doing those up to the Saturday before the election.
The application is out on our website.
Can we come in, like, to see you and get a voter, not an application, but actually get the FSK ballot here?
Yeah, you can come in, pick up your application, fill it out here, and pick up your ballot if you choose to do so.
And, and vote, right?
Yes, you, yes, you can do that also. There are a couple voting booths set up in the lobby of the, the building to do that.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Anything else there?
Nope.
Thanks to all that showed up for the state of the township last night, and thanks to Colleen for putting all that together. Did, I noticed we, we gave out those little cards for questions. Were there some people to ask a question? There's two?
Okay.
Okay. Let's take a brief recess, unless there's anything else right now. Then we'll go to our managers' report and our discussion items.